of the Sonoma City Council. It's not on the agenda, but we will be doing the pledge. Councilmember Vice Mayor Edwards, will you lead us, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, with equal liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and I believe we have a dedication.
Just a quick dedication, if you'll bear with me. So there was a walk in Yountville on Saturday, and two young ladies, Tallulah and Ruby Finkelstein, put together a kindness walk. They had 450 people showed up. The mayor of Yountville came and did a proclamation. Mike Thompson's office did a proclamation. The Assembly did one as well, and these two young ladies just made this happen on their own, pretty special, and they finished at the veterans' home and had a little celebration up there. So I just wanted to shout out to them, and here's a sample of the button. They passed that in Spanish and English, and I thought it was pretty cool to see young people do that. So, thank you.
That is cool, thank you. And the agenda does say pledge, I just usually skip that part. Our Madam Clerk today, can you do a roll call?
Councilmember Harrington.
Here.
Councilmember Aggermonte.
Here.
Councilmember Edwards.
Here.
Councilmember Cook.
Here.
Mayor Hundley.
Here. We did have two items in the closed session today. Does our city manager or city attorney have anything to report out on those?
So there were two items in the closed session. One was a litigation with the successor agency with the state of California, and there was no report out from that. In addition, we had a conference about labor negotiations, and there was no report out from that.
Thank you. Next up, approval of the agenda. This time I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Thank you. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Harrington.
Aye.
Councilmember Aggermonte.
Aye.
Councilmember Edwards.
Yes.
Councilmember Cook.
Aye.
Mayor Hundley.
Aye. Item one today is the consent calendar for the city council. All items listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be acted upon by a single motion, which is good because there's only one. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless members of the council staff or public request the specific item to be removed for separate action. At this time, council may decide to change the order of the agenda. Any council questions? Got to take it out to the public, though. Did you have to remove it?
No, I just, the city attorney was going to give a brief statement about why we're not having public comment, for the record, I think. I, well, I talked to the city manager about that, I don't know if the city attorney was aware of that. I don't know when that would take place, but.
I think now's probably a good time.
Thank you.
Sorry, I put you on the spot.
No problem. Tonight is a special meeting, it was noticed as such, and under the Brown Act, the council can consider only those items on the agenda. And consider is defined broadly in the Brown Act to include hear, listen to, but it does not include probably deliberate, although it probably includes deliberate. But it clearly makes it the fact that, at tonight's meeting, the only things this council can consider and deliberate and hear about are the things on the agenda. And there's also a specific provision in the Brown Act that provides that the public is only entitled to comment on those things on the agenda, and that's why the general public comment portion is not included in tonight's meeting, because they would bring things up that are not on the agenda. That's what your council asks people to talk about when they speak at the public comment portion, are things that are not on the agenda. So the Brown Act limits the ability of the council to hold these special meetings that the public typically is not aware of to those things that are on the agenda and only agenda, only on the agenda.
And maybe, can I just add, just briefly? So, just for some background, typically the council, we set a calendar at the beginning of the year for the entire year, and we typically go dark the first two weeks in August. There have, you know, there are times a council and the city manager don't know what's going to come up, and so you need to schedule a special meeting in order to move business items through that are time-sensitive. And so tonight, special meeting, both in terms of the commission process, which council wanted to move forward on, that we talked about after the West Napa Hotel EIR, need to bring this back to you in terms of getting some direction, and in addition, we had to close session items, which also were time-sensitive and required a special meeting.
Thank you for that clarification. Councilmember Cook? Nope. If there's no questions on this, I'll take it out to the public for public comment. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council for a motion and action.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Second. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Can I get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Harrington.
Aye.
Councilmember Aggermonte.
Aye.
Councilmember Edwards.
Yes.
Councilmember Cook.
Aye.
Mayor Hundley.
Aye. Item 2.1, discussion, consideration, and possible action on the process used to make appointments and reappointments to city commissions and committees and other related commission business. I believe we will begin with our city manager.
Yes. So if I could ask the community development director to put a PowerPoint up, I'm just going to briefly go through and just give some highlights to both council and community. This information was in your staff report, but in case there's anything you want to refer to as we go forward. So, back in April 2017, the council discussed whether it wished to revise the process for making appointments to city commissions. The current process is for a mayoral nomination and council ratification. The majority of council at that time directed staff to bring forward some different options. On June 5th, council had additional discussion, and there were three options that were discussed. One, amend the current mayoral nomination and council ratification process. Two, look at full council appointments for commissions. And three, look at individual council member appointments for commissions. And council directed staff to move forward with option three and come back with further implementation items, which is the reason why we are here tonight. So, there's going to be a variety of decisions the council will have to give us feedback on, and some of them are connected, and so we'll try to walk through this. But it does get a little complicated, just because there's, it's a little 3D. I think the first thing that, as we look at, is, and even before I dive into this slide, one of the recommendations from staff at the very beginning is, right now, your commission appointments happen at various times. So it's frankly, it's been kind of, whenever someone leaves, you're making that appointment. A number of other cities that myself and the city clerk have worked is that there is an alignment of terms, and so terms begin like January 1 or February 1. Now, you might still have some people, there are some turnover through the year, and you might do a partial go-out recruitment, maybe sometime in early spring, if you've lost, have a few turnover, a few vacancies that you want to try to fill. But otherwise, right now, our dates really are kind of all over, and so the council's not able to look at a commission as its whole and look at what vacancies or what reappointments they have. They are looking at the individual person who is either asked to be reappointed or someone who's been nominated. And we believe it's a better practice and makes less work for staff as well, and I think better marketing if we align all the terms and do this in potentially a January, or January or February start all the terms versus now they are kind of all over. So that is one kind of broad umbrella recommendation that we're making. The other is, I think, a decision point for council is, when we looked at all the individual commissions and the different types of appointments, there really are kind of two groups. There's a group A, which are really valley or regional appointments, where council may appoint one person or two, or I think the max three, and the detail is all within your staff report and the attachment. And then there is what I would call traditional city commissions and committees. And there, most of them are at least five, and some are seven or nine, which means there is an opportunity for the council to each appoint individually and to use that process that the majority wanted to explore at the last meeting when we talked about this. So I think there is another decision point for council and a place we're looking for direction, is even though you said you wanted to move forward with individual appointments, right now, I think we potentially, staff looks at it and says, there is a subgroup A which really do not align well to do individual appointments, and you may want to keep with your mayoral process and just refine maybe some of the clarity and transparency around that in terms of maybe making that the full council sees the applications and how the reporting, et cetera, goes. So that is kind of group A. The other decision for council is to look at then for your city commissions and committees, what on this slide is called Group B on the right side is, do you, clearly there's been a lot of conversation about planning commission. Do you want to, with the other commissions, Design Review, Community Services and Environment Commission, Cultural Fine Arts, and Traffic Safety, do you also want to appoint those individually, or do you want to use a different method for those also? So again, and I just want to say again in terms of timing, because of council's interest in filling the vacancies in the planning commission and moving forward with planning commission, we see that the planning commission process, regardless of what decision you make, will move forward as soon so that we hopefully have a updated planning commission in place by early November, so they can hold a public hearing and scope, scoping hearing on the EIR, which was again, the interest of the council. So, and then the rest of whatever you decide for your design review and community services, those could all be done in more, what would be the typical annual process, which would happen in January, and potentially those terms start with February. If that makes sense. Okay? Next slide. So this, I'm not going to go into great detail, but this does lay out kind of a little bit of a process. We do think regardless of what mechanism you're using to appoint, you, it is good to have everyone fill out an application. It lets the public understand who the person is, what their background, whether it's an individual appointment or a mayoral subcommittee, and also lets us provide opportunity to applicants and make sure they understand how the Brown Act works, that they may, depending what commission they're on, have to provide information about their own financial background to comply with the Fair Political Practices Commission and provide some financial disclosure. There are things that we want to make sure before someone accepts that they understand the process. And then on the left side with the mayor's subcommittee, going forward, some things that we may want to consider is really putting a list of those qualified candidates and their applications out, that the full council sees those. Maybe continuing with the mayor and another council member to serve on a subcommittee. And then when a mayor selects that final committee, that final candidate, that the staff then is potentially contacting the candidate, staff could be informing the council, and then it would be put on an agenda for council ratification. But when those positions come forward, again, because we're all doing this all together potentially, if council directs, follows staff recommendation, there would be a long list of items and people that are being considered versus kind of this one person on this council meeting in June and another person in August, which puts a lot more attention on individual appointments and actions versus really looking at, I would call, a comprehensive look at our commission and committee appointments at one time. So again, the process still would be the mayor nominating, and council still would have to ratify, and if there's not acceptance, then potentially it comes back. On the council individual process, one of the main, another kind of decision point as we go through this process is, council's going to need to decide if you want to, either as individuals, because let's just take planning commission, for example, if you each have an individual appointment on planning commission, there are a couple of questions. In some agencies, though you have an individual appointment, in some agencies, the full council still has to ratify that appointment. That is a question. There's also a question of, do you want to interview as a body? Do you want to interview everyone? Or interview just potentially two members at large? Or how do you want to handle that? That's another choice. We're going to try to push you through, walk you through a process to make some of these decisions. It gets kind of, there's a lot of different options here. But some agencies do actively interview, and it's a formal process to interview folks that want to apply for commissions. In other places, it is a paper process and/or council members have conversations with people at coffeehouses and more informally, and/or the telephone or via email, and it's not a formal structured interview process. That really is, that's a choice of the council. But depending what that process is, we then would come back and, you know, come to council, and there could be a list of who's, you know, who put their applications in. One choice is, does count, do we want to, on the staff report, when it goes out ahead of time, say, here's who the council individual appointments are? Or do we wait until on the dais, and the council then says, here's my individual appointment? And then you're going to have to vote for the two at-large appointments, for example, when you have a seven-member planning commission. So there are some pieces, details to work through there. There are also on those at-large positions, council currently, we have a number of alternates. An alternate does not make sense if you have individual appointments, but an alternate could make sense for those at-large positions. And so that is, the question is whether we want to continue to have alternates. So, there is this overall, as you're thinking about this transition to this individual process, there really are some different ways this can be done. And again, once council implements, then things are kind of easier and smoother after it's done, but there is this transition time that we've got to write and explore how that works in order to write it into the municipal code. So, option A is, you are transitioning to individual appointments, is, one option is you remove all the existing commissioners and anyone, you encourage folks to reapply, anyone who's interested. But then we're also marketing and seeing if there's anyone else in the community that's interested, and council then is looking at, for those individual appointments, anyone who wants to reapply and still is interested in serving, and/or new people that might be interested in serving. And you each are then looking at that pool for your individual appointments and/or your at-large. The other option, we brainstormed this, just especially since you've got, you have planning commission, but there are these other commissions, and there has not been some of the concern about some of those other commissions. There's different ways to do that. Do you want to stagger that maybe? Or council, you deal with those, maybe as a vacancy occurs and you each have, you just stagger a vote in and you're not pulling everyone off? You could do that alphabetically, you could do it based on term of office, you could do a random draw. And I think the next slide David shows kind of, if you wanted to do some kind of a staggered, this includes planning commission, but you could do planning commission separately. You could decide to deal with the other four commissions and do some kind of a staggered process here, where it's kind of a, like in this situation, we'd be pulling out of a hat, and I'd say, I'm now pulling council member A, and council member A might be Vice Mayor Gary Edwards, and that means that, you know, however you're going to do this, Gary would have first pick on planning commission. You could do some things like that, so you're not kind of removing everyone and starting over. The next slide shows, you do have some vacancies, so if you wanted to stagger, there are some different ways to stagger and to do that. And in particular, planning commission, you have two regular and one expired term, so you potentially have three opportunities there, and you can see down the line. Next slide. So some of these we've talked about, and when I talked briefly, and these are written within the staff report, there is this term alignment. The way we would see this is, we would start, not for planning commission, because that's going to have to move forward more quickly in order to meet that November deadline. But if you decide to move all the rest of the commissions, we would start marketing and telling the community, council's going to be looking at commissions and committees, if you're interested in any of these, please apply. And we would mark and advertise maybe in November. We'd be closing in December, you're either interviewing, or council's reviewing applications. And then probably January, maybe, after you've got whatever your, because sometimes you've got an election, you might have a new council member. That person then has an opportunity to have their voice, and so you could typically be doing that in January. Here, it talks about the term starting March. We actually have looked at it, we think the term could start February 1 with the council taking action in January. There's another moving piece here, because there's a lot of moving pieces, is what is the length of the term? Currently, the city has, you have a two-year term, a four-year term, and a two-year term. Most agencies I've worked with have got two four-year terms. But, so, there's, that really is a choice, whether we want to stay with the two four-year two or the two four-years. This might be a place where you might, if you don't care strongly, you might tell staff, I don't care strongly, figure out what works better to transition this, through this, quite honestly, because I can see some pros and cons with that. In terms of term extension, it has been the city's past practice that when we have a vacancy, and when we have a term expire and a new decision has not been made about whether that incumbent will be reappointed or not, especially like the end of a second-year term or the end of, end of a two-year term or end of the first four-year term. And this is a fairly typical practice, that person continues to serve. They can still vote, even though their term is officially expired, but they can continue to serve because they have not been formally replaced. And sometimes, it takes some time to go through those processes, and you don't want a commission to be light, to have vacancies. And so, that is a practice, and a fairly typical practice with the city. We actually think it would be good if staff recommends you continue it, but we recommend we be explicit about it and we're clear about it within the ordinance. Your other option is saying, no, when the term expires, it's done, and if it takes 60 days to fill that position, that commission is going 60 days without a person to vote or be involved. There are other, there are all, there's also, you have currently an eight-year, you can currently be on for your two-year, four-year, and two-year, and then you have a term limit of eight years. Some agencies, and our municipal law is not really clear, some places will create and be clear that if you've served eight years, then if you have a four-year break in service, then you're welcome to reapply and get involved again, because maybe you do have people that could be on another commission or could be helpful. But you also want to create opportunity for new blood and new people to be involved. So you don't typically, cities don't want someone to serve eight years and then serve another eight years, though that happens in a few places. The kind of the typical process is you do want kind of an eight-year, kind of best practice, then have someone take a break in service, or recommending here that you, that we implement kind of a four-year gap in service and that that's clear, which is not in our current, not clear in our current code. Alternates, not all cities use alternates, and if you're going to have your at-large, and frankly, some of your, that group A I showed you on that slide do have alternates, we're fine if you want to continue, use alternates, but that's a place we need to know. We also want to clarify, and it's a bit early on this, but the youth representation, the CSCC does have, that is the only commission, it has what's called a youth position. It currently is filled by an adult. And the question is really, should that be a youth position, or like a youth-youth on that commission, or should be an adult affiliated with a youth-related organization in town? I know we have been looking at the whole issue of youth commission and coalition. I would kind of argue that we can deal with this later and decide what we want to do when we bring back kind of some broader conversation on that. One of the interesting things about Sonoma is, we would do, because we, the city is 10,000, that we sit in this broader community that is very involved in the city's business and considers our downtown and the incorporated city their community, and well, they should, because there is this unique community that's broader than our jurisdictional boundaries. And a lot of folks that live outside the town contribute to the vitality and warmth of Sonoma. So we do have four commissions where we have, where we allow non-residents to be appointed and have a voting position. And again, that is not typical, but it fits the makeup, it has traditionally fit the makeup and culture of our town, and so we just need to, as we're working on these commissions, do you want us to continue? There's also this qualified elector, where a number of the commissions say that a couple of positions, a number of the positions have to be required electors, and that means they have to be a US citizen, they have to be 18 years or older, and they have to be a resident. So it's currently probably a little more than half, half, or a little more than half on most of the commissions. We talked about the extension, and I guess another question is size of the commissions. If we're going to try to deal with kind of, look at all the commissions and everything now, you're going to give us this direction, if there's anything in terms of number of people in any of the commissions you want us to take a look at, this would be the time to do that, or we can come back and have a further conversation. So, once we get direction from council on these issues, over the next year, there's a variety of things that are best practices that we want to work with our commissions. One, it's very helpful to have commissions, especially maybe not your, not your design review and your planning commission, but even those can have a work plan, but definitely your CSCC, your cultural fine arts, having a work plan, having them do an annual report, having them present, the chair or vice chair present something to a council on an annual basis. Also, if there's a need for any role or process, but there's can be some communication issues that we can talk about. Also, we have, you know, there's a lot of folks that donate their time and energy and volunteer on the behalf of our community for free, and they do it because they care about this town and are serving. And I think this is a place that we can do some, we can kind of do some more to show some appreciation and show some appreciation events to our commissioners. And then we've talked a little in the past about training. The city attorney's office has put together kind of a curriculum and a scope of some training that we like to do, and we will start that once we know kind of when and who and timing, because it makes sense to train the folks who are going to be continuing to serve moving forward. But that's both Brown Act, fair political practices, conflict of interest, meeting management, et cetera. So those, I think, are the, kind of an overview to orient everyone. And with that, be happy to answer any questions and try to move through this process.
All right. Do we have any questions?
I just have a question about the procedure. So can we go through this piece by piece and vote on it a part at a time, or do we have to do one vote on the entire, you know, the entire program?
I think we're going to have to do piece by piece and maybe get some straw proposals, but I think there are some kind of components that are linked that we need to talk through. So maybe the first thing is for council just to have a dialogue and discussion amongst yourselves of what you're thinking after questions, and then we can try to kind of see as staff if we can walk through some of these issues. It's going to take a team to work through this.
Any other questions? Seeing none, I'm going to take it out to the public for public comment.
Hi, Karen Schugland, 126 Blue Wing Drive. That was a very impressive presentation, how she, you pulled all that complicated stuff together. I did read that online, and my comment is that if you should, if you should decide to go to one council member per one appointment, I would hope that prior to that, you would have full council interviewing. Would seem to me, if just one person is going to make the final decision, you would benefit from hearing the questions and focus of your other council members in interviewing. But I wish you well.
Thank you.
I got here just in time. Robert Demmler, 649 First Street West. Again, this is very impressive, and Kathy, I'm one of those. Again, this is very impressive, and Kathy, I'm one of those, I'm sorry, I'm Jesse, but I'm one of those residents who care for this town. My personal opinion is I have no problem with any of this, except the appointment process. And I think it's rather unnecessarily complicated, and it could be subject to some problematic issues in the future. What I would like to suggest, if it's not too late, is that there be an advisory board to the city council for commissions, for the selection process, and that advisory board be composed of former city council members and former city commissioners. I haven't thought this out thoroughly, it's an undeveloped idea. However, that selection process, maybe everyone who has ever served on the council, who, anyone has ever served on a commission for a full term, could be de facto a member of this advisory commission, advisory board for commissions. And that they vet all of the candidates for, and then make the proposal to the city council as a whole to agree or not agree on this. But these are, this would be composed of citizens who've done the job, as it were, and I think it would be extremely helpful to have that, and it would take the burden off of you city council members to deal with this selection process, and it would make it more of a broad-based citizens' participation in city government. I do support very much the training aspect of this, because I have been in meetings where there's a new commissioner who just was appointed, and it's the first time that commissioner has met. I'm a great believer in that. I'm also a great believer in it's your role, and the commissioner's role, to enforce city ordinances, the general plan, the zoning issues, and so forth. And we have had too much of political posturing by individuals in our community who object to something that is all within our city rule, our code, or whatever, with no exceptions, requested. Those should be rubber stamped, and if you don't like that, change the rules. Enough of this neighbor complaints and all of this posturing. It wastes time, and it wastes taxpayers' money. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Chris Petlock, 426 Napper Road, Sonoma. So, this is my eighth year serving on a commission, and I just want to say again, it's really important to make it easy. I can tell you, not many stay long. So regardless of who you choose, who chooses them, it's really up to them if they stay. A lot of times, it's just personal reasons or whatever, so just make it easy to fill these commissions. I know with the CSCC, the CSC runs a lot of events that happen in this city, and it's on the backs of those volunteers and those commissioners to make those events happen. And when, like right now, we're down to four or five people, really, it's just one or two people making those things happen. And they are part of what makes it really nice to live here when those community events happen. So, again, I urge you just to make it easy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Heidi Darling, with KMS Capital and First Streets Project. I just want to take a second to thank you guys for listening to your constituents and being open to updating a broken system, if you will, a dated system certainly. And I spent some time, Kathy, digging into very extensive version of options and choices, and can tell that you really did your homework, so great job on that. I just, I guess I also want to take a second to say that this is a really important position, especially for the planning commission, because they're shaping the future of Sonoma. And so I urge you guys to consider keeping people on the planning commission that have at least two years of experience, so that you can continue to develop knowledge base and expertise. And Kathy, I thought that was an interesting proposal, to move from two years to four years in the first term. So I support that. And I guess I also just want a little clarity around, if it does go to the council select of the existing planning commission members, who becomes essentially your designated elect for the next go-around, and how does that transition work? So, again, thank you for being open to change.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. Mayor Hunley, Steve Barbo's at 461 Patton Street. And as all of you are aware, I'm a former planning commissioner and an eight-year city council veteran. I have to say that I think this single appointment process is a mistake. It's going to politicize this process far more than it needs to be. The system we've had was not perfect, and there have been disagreements, but for the most part, it's worked well. You've gotten people who served in the planning commission for a great number of years, built a knowledge base, built experience, had developed the ability to analyze complex problems. This doesn't happen overnight when you get appointed by somebody. What I see coming from this is a lot of short-term people, whose terms are going to be, by this proposal, limited to your terms. Not all of you may be running again. So what happens to your planning commissioners? That person gone, and they're going to serve at the will of maybe another council member who gets elected? Maybe not. We need independence between the planning commission and the city council. We don't need planning commissioners looking over their shoulder to worry about whether the council member who appointed them approves of what they just decided. That's the wrong direction. We want, you have the right to hear on appeal something and to overturn it if you think it's a mistake, but accord these folks the dignity and respect to serve in the way that they have been. I just don't feel like this is a good approach. And I realize that this decision hasn't been made finally, but all of you seem to be leaning toward that. But I urge you to reconsider it. The system is not broken, and in my view, doesn't need this wholesale change. What I see here is a very complex thing, which tells me that there is a very high risk of unintended consequences. And I don't think what we're talking about is going to work better than, and serve the interests of this city better than what we have right now. I think this is really unfortunate timing with these two hotel projects coming up. You're going to have a planning commission that is short-staffed and inexperienced. I don't know what else to say about that. I just urge you to, there's some other options besides doing this, and I really urge you to look at those. I think the city manager pointed some of those out to you. I agree with Mr. Demmler's suggestion for the advisory committee, and the other comment about the training of commissioners, which could really be helpful. But I urge you to take this decision very carefully and slowly, and to reconsider this appointment process, where each council member chooses their own planning commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bob Felder, Fifth Street Eats, Sonoma. As you know, I've spoken to you in the past about the type of choice you're making on how to make commission appointments, and I'm not in favor of the direction you're leaning, but I'm also going to take a very pragmatic and personal view based on what I care about for, to see happen in Sonoma. I am extremely concerned with the makeup of the planning commission. And I would like to see people with, that are qualified, and that have a sufficient experience base beyond that commission for the important projects coming before the city. If you proceed in the way you're going, I would like to be able to submit my application for your consideration to be reappointed to the planning commission. Under what the city manager has outlined as a potential way to have a gap between appointments of four years, I wouldn't be able to do that. So I'm asking you, from a personal point of view, with my qualifications, with my experience base, with my knowledge of the projects coming before the planning commission, that if you do go in the direction you're going, to please not make that a hard and fast rule, and be able to consider my appointment. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment on this item? Seeing none, I will bring it back to the council for discussion. So, I guess we can start with the general thoughts on things, and then as we move towards giving more concrete direction, we'll go in some sort of order. But anyone's got to start.
Okay. So just as a general thought, I, you know, it occurred to me as people are saying that individuals should not, that it's somehow inappropriate that each individual would have an individual selection to review the current process. The current process is one individual out of five, the mayor, who is selected by us, gets to pick. And so, one person is picking right now, it's the mayor. And so what we're talking about is, instead of all of the power being vested in the one person, to each, who are each duly elected and talk to different people, having the power to select somebody, each of us, I think, is a reasonable person, a thoughtful person, intelligent people, and none of us would ever pick somebody that we thought was not a good candidate to carry out their most honest and straightforward, you know, ability about everything that is before them. So I think this is a premise about what's going to happen. Nobody here, and I have come to know these colleagues, would ever select someone for any reason other than that they were a thoughtful, committed, intelligent individual. So I just think as a premise, that has to be made clear. I'm sad that that has to be made clear, but it should be made clear that every person here would never appoint someone for any purpose other than that they would do a good job. In terms of how to handle the matters tonight, I think the simplest way to do it is to go forward and say, and I'll tell you my opinion, group A, that are the kind of one person appointed, I believe that those should stay with the mayor, and we should keep the current process, subject to the tweaks the staff has suggested for administration purposes. Group B, I think that we should each get an individual pick, in terms of the additional people, like if there's seven people, and there's, so there's two that would need to be picked. I personally like the idea of just drawing straws on a rotating basis, and some people will get two picks, that's, you know, straightforward, and can be done pretty quickly. In terms of the terms, I think we should have four-year terms, that makes it easier for the staff, it makes, gives a person a longer time to get to know how to do their job. And I would suggest that we start all of our commissions, except for the planning commission, which needs to be filled immediately, for all the reasons we talked about. I think we should start all of the commissions on four-year terms, beginning at the outset of next year, January or February. I don't want to say, you know, the analogy being that, you know, you sort of like make people reapply for their jobs, so I understand that that is insulting to our volunteers, and I don't mean it to be that way. And I think we should ask all the people currently serving to let us know if they want to continue serving, if that is the case, and we have an application on file. I think we should allow them to use that application, and not ask them to fill out a new application, and make it as easy as possible for people who want to be considered for staying on, to be reappointed. But practically speaking, if we have to start a new term, then we have to appoint them to that new term. So I just think, practically speaking, what I am suggesting is, group A, let the mayor keep doing it, subject to the staff-recommended tweaks. Group B, that we start over, brand-new terms, four years, one shot each, four years, we're not doing it all the time, and that, that apply to every commission, and then we just start fresh on new four-year terms. It will be hard, and we will apologize to people for having to reapply, but we will make it clear to them that it is not a wholesale firing of everyone on commissions, that it's just a procedural, you know, necessity, so that we can start over on clear four-year terms. And that's what I think we should do.
I have, Tom?
Sagramanti.
Thank you. So, with respect to appointments by the mayor, I said earlier this year, when we had this brouhaha over the appointment, it has nothing to do with our mayor, Rachel. It has to do with the system we've put ourselves into. Amy, I have to tell you, I sat here through the Joanne Sanders thing, I sat here through Lori's thing, David, and then now Rachel. Every mayor has come under great, I don't know, anger. People were angry about everything that went on. It's not, this doesn't work. I believe in my heart, this does not work. The other thing I think, so I just remember all of these appointments being contentious. And each mayor, I think, as you have offered, meant well, believed in what they were doing. It didn't, it didn't end well. I want to draw everybody's attention to page seven of this, because Kathy, our city manager and I have talked about this, I have discussed this for probably two and a half years. Kathy doesn't have the pleasure of listening to every rant and rave I have about this. I think this is the most important thing that we could do with our appointments. For example, I think that Gary, Vice Mayor Gary Edwards has suggested about the Sonoma State classes for planning. I don't know if those even exist again, I know our city manager has a desire to reinstate them. I have sat through or watched some meetings that were run terribly, because our commissions, commissioners, number one, do not, some of them don't know how to run a meeting, they don't understand the ethics with respect to the Brown Act. And the other thing that really bothers me, what I'm hearing here today, is that we really honor our commissioners. We never give them a lunch, a breakfast, or a dinner. I have spoken to Kathy about this, and I think they're going to institute these things. My additional remarks are, I just want to know, after we get through this, what will we do about this page seven and the four? Four suggestions, because I have been, and it's, you know, all I know is I'm tired of talking about, when are we going to do a little luncheon, all of those things? Okay, to get back, I have come to, first of all, I have worked in the, a system where a council member, in the last city I served on a council, we had our own appointments. I never felt that there was a big political brouhaha over it, as it is here. But I will say, why would I appoint someone that was no good, because they were a friend? Why in the world would I do that? I would want them to pass the same qualifications that anyone else has to pass, or be prepared for this position. I think people have to be ready for an opportunity to serve. The other thing I think I'm really interested in is the, with respect to the commissioners, is that, you know what, I'm comfortable with just doing this for the planning commission. The rest of the commissions, I think that I'm comfortable with it, everything, all of the group A's, group B's, I'm comfortable with, just to stay with the mayor, mayor, you know, hit the pick by the mayor, and another council member. And I'm very comfortable with that. With respect to terms, gosh, I don't want to get rid of everyone, then who would we take to lunch and say thank you to? But I just, I think it's important, so that's what I think. The only thing that doesn't seem to fit well is the planning commission, and I'm in support of, possibly, I go either way on this, individual appointment, because I come from that background, or the whole council interviews them. And it doesn't have to be in this setting, it could be in a more comfortable setting, where people feel at ease, and they're not worried. However, my criticism is, we're not in high school, this is city stuff, and you should be prepared for an interview in front of possibly, that you, people you know, and also the city council. So, I guess that's what I'm suggesting with respect to how I feel about this.
Where are we going to lunch? So, one of the things for me is, and I've just put a few notes here, is the dignity of the commissions. And I think it's really important, that it's an important position, no matter what commission you're on, and it has to be treated with respect. I think the 242 works pretty well, and the reason being is you can, you can make bad picks. I mean, we can all make bad picks. And I've seen it happen on certain commissions, and I just, I think a 242- And I've seen it happen on certain commissions, and I just, I think a 2-4-2 makes a lot of sense, because if somebody's doing a great job and doing well, then you can say, all right, four more years, then you have another chance to, you know, as you're, another person is coming up the line, you have a chance to say, all right, here's a two-year pick, because we have somebody else who's, can move into a four-year position. And I think that alternate, that makes sense. And I think we should have alternates, because it takes, it takes a long time to learn to be a commissioner, to sit, to sit there and, you know, and you get to sit in that chair over there, and when you have a full commission, and you get to watch people's expressions, their eyes, the audience, how it, how it really works, and you can get an idea of which commissioners are rolling their eyes and which ones aren't. And, not that any of the commissioners ever roll their eyes, I know council people never do that. But it's something that you get a feel for the character of the position, and I think that's, that's really important. And then, as far as all the other commissions, I think we should have a max of seven people on, on commissions. I mean, I think, when you get more than that, it just gets a little too crazy, as far as I'm concerned. But I, I think, I mean, I was the dissenter in the last vote, I mean, I think it should be the mayor that's making the appointments with another council person still, and working that out, but I, you know, I'm open to hearing what everyone else has to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cook?
Well, I've, I've been involved in this part for a long time, before I was on the council. You know, I, like Councilmember Agamonte said, I never got sworn in for two and a half hours because council was still going over a planning commission decision that, you know, for an appointment. So, it is, it is a flawed system. And I went back and forth trying to figure out how to, how to fix it, and looked back on, probably the main ingredient is, and being a past mayor of Sonoma, I understand that it puts the mayor in a bad spot. I got hit because of just somebody who, who I picked, and a council member happened to be on, on vacation, so it had to go through a two-week process where the index tribune, you know, had it on Tuesday and Friday until Madeline Agamonte came back and we finally did it. Not to put it on you. And then, you know, I saw it this year with Mayor Hunley, and I was part of, part of that reason on this side. And my reason was that I think the mayor got hit by another thing that was in there on reappointments, where, when I was the mayor, I reappointed everyone back for ratification. Well, it puts the mayor in a spot where, I, I don't think that Mayor Hunley was doing it because she's, was facetious. I thought that, I think that she felt that she was doing the right thing, and she was doing what the process was. So I was never calling out the mayor of Sonoma, I was calling out the process. Do I have a problem with, you know, the way it is? I like the way it is, as long as reappointments could come back to the, yeah, at least the reappointments could come back to the council for, for ratification. But with my history of knowing what happened, you know, when I was mayor, what happened to Mayor Sanders, and I'm sure that it happened to other people, we need to have a process that works. And one of our public speakers did speak, and I 100% believe that it should be an easy process. We don't want to make this too complicated. So tonight, after thinking about this a lot, I am in support for council members to appoint, that would be five members on the commission that would be appointed. I agree with Councilmember Harrington, I don't think it is as political as people think. I know myself, and hopefully, future council members and my colleagues, I believe, feel the same way, trying to pick the right person. This person is somebody, it's like giving a recommendation of a plumber, you want to make sure that you have the best experience for that person. Just because your brother's a plumber, you might not, you know, give that reference out. And I think that this happens to be the case in this, so I'm not worried about that. And I know that there's a lot of individuals that are concerned about that, but after thinking about this for a long time, I'm just not. What my biggest concern is, the size of the commissions. I believe that the planning commission should be seven individuals. I believe that the design, right, design review, the CSCC, Culture of Fine Arts, and the Traffic Safety Committee should all be five. Those would be appointed, it'd make it a very simple process. Council members would have each pick. As far as how, how to stagger those, I believe that we want to send out a strong message, especially tonight, because there's a lot of public, that we're not unhappy with the way the commissions have ran. I like the part, as we're talking about appreciation, I believe that, you know, the call to duty on a commission is probably one of the hardest things to do in, in the city of Sonoma, because you get very little benefit, except for people calling you up because you're making the wrong decisions, and, and it's, it's hard. But I do believe that that is a good stepping stone of going into the council or other, you know, other committees. So in no way, shape, or form would I ever want to put anything in that says that somebody has to be dark for four years. I believe that that would probably single, or that would single out some people that we might want in. How I'd like to see the process moving forward today is very quickly, especially regarding the planning commission. I would like to see, after this decision is made tonight, where we do come back and every, anyone who wants to be on the planning commission submits to the city clerk, and then we get those and we decide who we're going to pick, and we give it to the city clerk, kind of the way that the recommendation from staff. I like that. As far as, you know, the other, the other two, I am with Councilmember Harrington also on that, I think it should be a straw vote. And you can even exclude my name out of that, because I think one pick for me would be enough. I, I did seven when I was mayor and I, it was hard. And that's why I'm here to say that this just needs to be an easy process, because, not to get into any of the past, but I feel bad for Mayor Hunley, the same way that Mayor Cook had to deal with right at the beginning. It kind of ruins your years mayor, and I think it upsets what we have up here on the council. We serve with individuals that, maybe we don't like them as much as our best friend, but we're like coworkers, that we need to get along, we need to, to work, work through it. And I think that this process, the reason I think it's flawed, is because I think that it causes a lot of problems up here on the dais. I know it did for me when I was mayor, because it was things that I wanted to do, and, you know, the selection of commissions was not on my highest priority. And I believe that all my colleagues probably feel the same way, that, you know, we want to pick the right people. So, I would like to kind of go through this, and if city staff can just help me out by making this the simplest process that we can, and I like the appreciation part.
Can I ask a question? Councilwoman Harrington?
This is to councilmembers Cook and Edwards, with regard to reducing the size of the commissions, I guess my thought, and help me think through this, I-
Can I actually get my comments?
Oh, sorry.
So I'll give my summary, and then maybe we can dive into specific pieces? I have a list, it'll be fast. I still believe that this, that having direct appointments by the council is not only the most democratic, I believe that it will lead to greater diversity, not just demographic, but particularly perspectives and values that I think that I, that we don't see right now. And a plurality of cities in the county have this system and have moved to this system. And I've talked to a lot of people who, like Councilmember Agamonte, have had this system in the past or currently use it, and, you know, the experience is that it's really not that political. And when someone either doesn't run for office again or isn't reelected and they had a great commissioner, a lot of times they get picked up by somebody, because our interest is to pick someone who's going to do a really good job. I mean, part of it's because, you know, our love for the city, we want to pick the best people possible, but also, now that there is someone up there that's not doing a great job, everyone knows who picked that person. So there's, I think that there's even more, you know, seeing behind the curtain as to, like, why these people are sitting up there. Whereas now, you know, if, as long as it happened, you know, more than a couple of years ago, everyone just kind of forgets where that person came from. My rundown of all the different options, I agree that we should keep the mayoral process for the regional appointments, but I do like the enhanced transparency procedures. For the city commissions, individual appointments for all five. I, I like the idea of doing, having them approved at the end of January, starting in February, only paper applications, the only people that'd be interviewed are for the two at-large seats. I think the max commission size should be, commission size should be seven. Let's see. Alternate, I don't have a really strong feeling on it, but I was surprised to hear that this was a very, kind of a rare practice. So, my first choice is to not have an alternate, and for the out-of-town seats, I think that we should move more to an ex officio structure. And then, let's see, for implementation, I, I don't think that we should stagger the seats, but I do think we should pick one commission and then go through them. I think that planning commission's the most pressing. The CSCC, I would do next, just because they have a lot of seats to fill. And then, whoever, and then I think, I would like to talk about the Culture of Fine Arts Commission last, because that, conceptually, I think that there could be a lot of fun things to talk about to make them have even more influence or productivity in the city. For the at-large commissioners, I think that they should have four-year terms. I like the two-term limit, but instead of doing the gap, or we could have the gap or a four-fifths vote to extend, I don't know, I'm not, I'd be willing to listen to other people on that one. And after the first term, I don't think that there should be an automatic reappointment. And I want to codify the, the tail term extension of what happens when there's a gap. And I really love the parts about working with the commissions to have work plans and reports, and particularly appreciation. And I would like to see more of a connection, even if it's just, you know, at a colleague level with, you know, these groups that are out there doing so much work, and they're just, we're just all in our separate corners of the city, and rarely do we get to come together and, you know, hang out. And, of course, increased in training. And then for the youth representative seats, within the context of the discussion of the youth commission, I think that there could be more opportunities for a broader youth perspective, so I think I'd rather turn into that direction instead of having a youth representative. So that's my list. Ms. Harrington had a question?
Oh, well, I think you kind of, sorry to have started before you gave your remarks, but the question, I just want to make sure that, if there was a vote that was being decided, that a person who was not a resident of Sonoma was not the deciding vote. So that's my only concern about, if we have residents and then we have one seat, that's like an at-large seat, that the at-large person not be able to decide for the city of Sonoma, maybe being ex officio or just the number of people on it. I just think that whoever makes an ultimate decision should be somebody who lives in town.
I would agree with Councilmember Harrington on that. Make it ex officio.
Yeah, I think the, while I understand the, kind of the logic of what you're laying out, Councilmember Harrington, I think in practicality it can be difficult, let's say you have a seven-member commission and one person's sick and someone's traveling for business, and pretty soon you could get to a point where, and if, if you have, you know, if you've put someone on a non, I think if council wants to put a non-resident on, which has been the tradition for, I don't know how long, but that's currently how it is, and you're going to allow that person to vote, you're allowing them to vote, because you're not going to be able to pull their vote out if you have a thin commission. I think the only other way to do it is to have non-resident voice on commission, but have them be an ex officio, fully participates, sit at the dais, you know, active but can't vote on things. That is another, I think that is your, so the answer is either not have residents on, continue your current way that you have non-residents on, and/or do an ex officio. David, do you have any comments?
Well, I suppose that the ex officio might mean that you end up with seven plus one, if you want to maintain a seven-member commission, for the planning commission. So if you've got an ex officio and an alternate, that's, it's still seven plus one, but I'm just actually thinking more of a, kind of in trivial matter, where, where do we put the ex officio person? So that, that's just something that, you know, if you go in that direction, that we'll have to think about, and I just wanted to raise it. Thanks.
Good point. Councilmember Edwards?
I, so I'm going to disagree with you guys, because I think it's really important when you're sitting here, you're going through all the work, and then you do the homework, you do everything, and then you don't get the vote. And like City Manager Capriola says, is sometimes people are just, they just get busy, and if you have a, you know, a two-to-two and you're the, you're the fifth person there at, at a commission, I think it's important, because you still have two people in the city that are voting towards it, and I, I think it's, we have such a community that the outside springs, the, you know, outside of city limits are such an important part of our community, they pay the taxes just like we all do, and so on, that I think we have to keep that, that vote alive, no matter what. Because it, it's going to be hard to get people to want to sit through meetings and sit through three, four, five-hour planning commission meetings and say, oh, by the way, I can't vote. It's, it's, I think it's, I don't think that's the right way to go.
I'll say that I sat as the ex officio on this Sonoma Valley Citizens Advisory Commission, and I thought that the idea of it was valuable, of someone that was representing a very particular perspective, because right now, the out-of-town seat, it's, it's just another vote in the mix, and I, sometimes I, I think it would be impossible for one person to encompass the vote of Valley, and I, and I never hear the discussion framed in, you know, how this decision sort of affects the greater world out there. So I feel like if there was sort of a dedicated, like, this is our ex officio, because we do want to hear perspectives outside of the city, then it could be, it just, it enhances the conversation.
However, the SVCAC is mostly county people, and the city has, I believe it's two representatives, is that correct, Kathy? So it's the opposite, and actually back-
Well, but they're, but they're not representing, I was there for the city, like this, the actual, like, institution of the city perspective, as opposed to, you know, different residents. So it was more of just adding a different perspective.
I'm just thinking more of, because we had people back in the day, we had two ex officios, Igvella was one, and I can't, our, I can't remember his, his last name, another Cook with an E, but we had folks like that, but it was, I mean, it was important, because we were, as city people, we were making decisions on many, many projects. And I haven't seen a lot come through on SVCAC lately, but we had some pretty significant projects with the Raceway and other things that, that came through. So it was just as important to have people on, in the city limits, have a say in that vote as well. That's what I'm trying to bring across.
Well, I guess my thought, which I'm not really for or against the commission size, I mean, I'm open to whatever the consensus is on that, but the smaller the commission is, the higher the possibility is that somebody who does not live in Sonoma will be the decider, deciding vote.
And that's why I think seven is a good number.
So seven for you is five regular members, one alternate, and one Valley?
No, I'm just saying the size of a commission should be seven.
But I'm saying, is that the makeup? Five people from the city, one alternate, and one?
No, I'm not, I'm not saying, I'm just saying, commission size in general.
Well, I, so, is there, to fill in the holes of things that haven't been covered by people, I don't know if there's an order that you want to go down, and then we'll see what the sort of consensus is, because stuff like, things like that, I mean, even this ex officio versus out-of-town seat, I, I'm not hard and fast on that.
Well, some of these, let's see if we can maybe move through some of the decisions, and some of them are linked. So, I'm going to ask for help from both David and Jeff as we try to, in council, and see if we've covered them. So I'm going to, I'm going to start maybe and say, I'm looking, let's call this kind of straw proposals, straw votes, but is that a fair enough thing, Jeff? I'm saying, the first thing I want to say is, aligning the terms to start February 1. So rather than the kind of ad hoc nature of when terms come available now, we may occasionally have a vacancy mid-year, but the terms would all be the same, they would start, they would start February 1, and we'll talk about the length of the term- terms first. Because I think one piece of that that's important is, no matter whether it's a mayoral appointment, or whether in the future, once we get through a transition, you're appointing a future planning commission, you are looking at one time at anyone who wants to be reappointed, and anyone new who has applied, and you're looking at the comprehend, you're looking at all those applications at once. So the timing, I think, shifts what this looks and feels like, both to council members and to the public. So, is there support to move all, that all the, all of the individual commission terms would start February, let's just say February 1?
Well, I think we're just going to keep this orderly.
Okay, planning commission, we would be starting, would be transitioned sooner, because we need to have those be kind of a November 1. So there'd be a transition of, as soon as we could get planning commission in place, hopefully by November 1, and the rest of all the rest of the commissions, we'd be aligning terms to start February 1.
Well, I think this is two different issues here. One is this year, how this would happen, and the other one is, what does it look like going forward? So I think that, I don't think that those have to be answered together. I think that we're talking about the process in general, and then at the end, like, implementation of this year.
Okay, so let's start ongoing. We're looking, staff's recommendation was like a February 1 for terms to start, once we have tran, once we have transition. Does that make sense to the, to the council?
Yes, and, so I think, just a practical question, can we say that the planning commission would be reappointed, appointed, reappointed this year, but that their term would be, let's say, November through the end of the term, so that they would be synced up in the next cycle with the?
Yes, so there would be, there is this, there is a kind of a transition time, that if you appoint any, whatever the updated planning commission will be appointed, let's say effective November 1, and that term would not, you know, that, they still would start February 1 with their official terms. We'll call this a transition or an in-arm term. But then they would be lined up with the rest of your commission appointment terms to start February 1.
Can I ask a question here? If, if the council's heading in the direction of each one of you selecting your own candidate or appointee for each of the five commissions, the term of office of each of those persons will be your term of office. So when we talk about a two- or a four-year term, that's no longer really relevant. What you're really talking about is a max. So for example, if the mayor did not run for reelection next year, and she appoints somebody, or if she gets two selections for the planning commission, depending on how you handle the, the sixth and seventh appointee, and let's assume she appoints two, two people to the planning commission, the council decides you will essentially remove all the current occupants of that commission, and by November 1, you've re-selected, reappointed, or appointed for the first time, seven individuals to start serving November 1, so they can have a chance to review the EIR on the hotel. Two of those appointees have been made by the mayor. She does not run for reelection next year. Those two appointees' term would end on December, end at the first meeting in December of 2018.
No, that's not the system we're talking about.
You're not talking about that system.
Correct. We're talking about whoever we would pick, I'm just, just serves the term, it's not tied to the political term of the person who named you. They're just appointed, they serve for two or four years.
So the person who is, who takes the mayor's position, the new council member, that person would not be entitled to pick anybody to the commission, because there'd be no, no vacancies created by, the vacancy created by the mayor not running for reelection.
But just to be linguistically clear, and I think we should stay away from using words like the mayor's person, they are not the mayor's person or the mayor's pick, they're just appointed, just like the, you could say whoever has been picked previously is the mayor's pick, they are just appointed as commissioners, they're just commissioners, and they will serve a term of a commissioner.
I, I think for purposes of discussion, it's helpful to use concrete examples, so we all understand how this process is, you envision, works. So I, so again, at least, Councilmember Harrington, your thought is, and maybe the other council members' thought is also, if we pick a four-year term, then your, your appointees, all seven of them, that begin in the commission on November, their term of office would be four years. It would begin, the four years would actually begin in February. And so their term of office would be like, like, four years and three months, which is okay.
My understanding is that the terms would coincide with the council terms, and there would be a little lag, because December to February, there's a gap there. Well, that's what, that is what has been suggested in the package.
Yeah, so I think this, we may have found another option. Again, there, you know, when we went to council, we originally talked about a mayoral appointment, a council as a whole appointment, and individual appointments, those are the models the cities use, and typically, the individual appointments are appointed for the term of the sitting, the sitting elected official. Councilmember Harrington, why I hear you say is really kind of a sub-A of the individual appointments, that while you're making the appointment for a two, whatever the length of the term, you are not saying that that person's term is aligned with the elected official, which is, which is a variant, a little different. So I'm not, I think we need to, as we're talking about this, be clear, in my mind, as I laid out the models, and as I was thinking through the proposal, the individual appointments were tied to individual council appointments. So for example, some of you are, have, you know, for, are basically, as we enter the fall, you'll have an election in November 2018, so you've got almost a year and a half left on a term. Some of you are, have three and a half years left on a term. So that's, so when I was, the recommend, I mean, that's another option, but I think we may need the council members that we're talking and interested in doing the individual appointments, as we continue the conversation, to be clear. Were you assuming that that individual appointment would go and align with the council term of office, or is it going to align with a, basically a commission term?
I just, so my thought was, if it just goes in a chronological years term, then whoever is elected at that time during their term of office will have the opportunity to appoint people, whether it's two or four years, whoever is in office will always have the opportunity to appoint people during their term. It may not be the first week of their term, it may be a year into their term, but at some point during every elected city council member's term, they will have, they should have the opportunity to appoint people, I think.
If I may, I, I just have a question, and maybe I'm not completely tracking on how the mechanics of that would work, but, you know, council members may choose to run for reelection, or they may not. They may choose, they may choose to run for reelection and not get reelected. So I'm just wondering if under this process, you end up with any confusion about who gets to make that second, who gets to make that second appointment, if there is transition in the council, that, you know, was not otherwise anticipated?
Councilmember Cook?
Well, I could answer that question really simply. Every one of us has a seat, like, I, I always feel that I'm sitting in past Mayor Sanders' seat, and so it could go by a number, doesn't matter, go by the, or A, B, C, and D, and E. So what Amy's saying, and I, I do agree with Councilmember Harrington, is this is just a selection process, and that's why the politics is kind of taken out of it. Let's say that we all vote tonight, that we're going to do this, all five of us, November 1st, are going to look at a list of individuals, and we're all going to pick one, and then we'll pick the other two to be at large, and however we decide to do that. The biggest question is moving forward, how do you get the fours, and how do you get the twos? Because you do want to have a staggered planning commission. So there's little things, but, and not just because I'm one of the three-and-a-half-year persons, but I was thinking that if we wanted to figure out, if we wanted to do three-twos and the other one fours, then you get into this, this process. And probably the main thing about this, and it was what I was going to mention earlier, is just because I am, let's say that I appointed past Mayor Barbosa, and I was unhappy with the way, I can't remove him. I mean, he's, that would have to be a ratification of the council to have anybody removed, and we need to make sure that we have a, a good process, you know, for that. So that was my thought.
I have a question for City Manager. Kathy, I show in the, on attachment A, we have about nineteen appointments that need to be made on commissions, with people expiring, et cetera. How many commission applications do we have on file at City Hall right now?
I apologize, I don't know that currently, so I don't, I don't know.
Okay, so one of my concerns is, is, I mean, I'm hearing, sensing where the council's going, obviously, but I still think a two-four-two, a two-year term makes a lot of sense, especially in this situation, and how the councils, you know, that goes two-three, two-three. I mean, I just think it's with terms, I think it makes more sense to appoint, and I, I don't think they should go with, like, City Attorney was saying that it should go with whatever the person's term is. It just needs to be a two-year appointment, and then as the next council cycles through, then it can be a four-year, if that person wants to apply for whatever commission they're on, and then a two-year option at the end, because then it creates new opportunity for people in the future, so.
I'm just having trouble-
Councilmember Edwards, can I ask a question about that?
Sure.
Let's assume, and I apologize, Councilmember Harrington, I'm going to use your names, because it helps me understand it, and if it doesn't help you understand it, let me know. Let's assume for the moment that Councilmember Cook selects somebody who's on the planning commission, and that term of office begins in November, and that person is assigned the two-year term you're talking about. That two-year term will expire while he's still on the council. He likes that person, he wants that person to continue. The rest of the council doesn't.
Oh, well.
Does that person get removed, or does, how does that work?
Depends on the vote of the council, right?
At that point?
Is that how that, this works?
I think the suggestion was that as picks came up, that in a rotating order, it would be your pick again. So, and I think the city manager laid that out pretty clearly, that if they're not all on a four-year term, then we have to take turns getting who, of who gets to pick the next seat that is open. So if they're not open at the same time, then Amy Harrington gets pick one, and Rachel Hunley gets pick two, and David Cook gets pick three, and then we cycle all the way through until Amy Harrington gets pick one, and then we just do it that way.
I think that was for the at-large appointees, not, not the core five.
Same system.
Yeah, I'm just offering questions, because these are sort of complicated issues. You have the core five that each council member selects. How you select the other two, I'll put that to the, the back burner for the moment. Let's assume, four months after you select, each select person who begins in the commission of November, one of them resigns, they don't want to be on the commission anymore. Does, is the person, is the council member who selected that person, is, is he or she entitled to fill that position with that, his or her appointee, or is it a rotational-
If it was up to me, no, I would give it to another council person.
Okay.
Because obviously it was-
So that would even result in a rotational concept? I'm just asking.
Well, I just don't know how, how would a newly-elected council member fit into the rotation? Like, what spot, what number do they get to be? And if they're going to be at the end, I mean, to me, the whole part of the draw was that, you know, it's, things stay a little more up to date, rather than having to wait eight years or whatever for someone to leave. But, so I, I, I find the simplest way would be for it to follow council terms, because we are already staggered, and therefore it will always be staggered, and you'll always know who has appointed somebody and who has not, because they won't be there. And I, I mean, I'd be curious to see how Daly City did the appointment, and how the terms lined up, because my understanding was that all the people I've talked to that have direct appointments, that all of them are tied to their terms.
In Daly City, they weren't tied to my terms. If it expired, we, you know, everybody just said, well, that's a good commit, you know, I guess we're taking out of this decision, are they bad, or are they good? If they're good commissioners, they're going to stay those terms that you, that you suggested, and I know that the commissioners that I appointed, they were there long after I left, and people just voted them back in, and then I think they were, I don't know, they're chattel or anything, I think they were given to another council member, the person, and that person liked them and said they were good.
So for the city attorneys, Jeff, so I have one for you. So what happens if, let's say the mayor gets two appointments, and, or anybody, and gets two appointments, and that individual resigns? Do those commissioners go right out the door with the resignation of a sitting council member?
I think that whoever fills their seat, when they fill it, they get to appoint whoever is in that seat. They could be either keeping the person sitting in, or could be replacing them.
Well, that's why I'm trying to get the staggered in, and if Councilmember Harrington and Councilmember Cook both did four, and the others did two, what we're doing is we're resetting the whole planning commission as a body. It's going to be their body. That's not saying that we're replacing everyone. All those individuals who are on the planning commission, and new people that come in. And where it makes it nice with the February 1st, and that's where we kind of stopped at, is if you look at the February 1st, even for the planning commission, even though they're coming in November 1st, we would probably delay that to have everything happen on February 1st. What would happen if, if Vice Mayor Edwards made a pick on February 1st, he goes through election, wins, he's going to have, in two years, from that Feb, or about a year, I guess it'd be about a year and three months, he'll make a four-year. Because that's what, that, that seat would have to go, would have to go two-four, two-four, and then for these seats, our two seats, it would go four to two. And that's just how you get the process in here. And that, to me, is about the only, only thing that really makes sense, to make it as simple as can go.
And one more thing, so you have a couple of projects that are going on in town right now, so if you have, it goes with your term, and the project takes five, or seven, or 10 years to get approved, you might have a completely new council and four different planning commissions by the time something gets actually heard.
But I think that's what democracy does, the council changes, and then I just don't see why the, the commissions are, you know, set in concrete, when this is the most current reflection of the city. November, we got a change, this next November, you know, there'll probably be a change, well, year after. And I think that that's, that's just how it is. It's the people pick us, and by having the commissions and the council timed together, it's, you know, if people want to change out a council person, then they should, and I think that that, that could speak to the people that they've appointed to the commissions. Things change.
So, do you agree the way that would work, then, is the two-four-two that Councilmember Cook just described?
I don't think that there should be, that there's not, there's not set terms for direct appointments. I think that the, that they're, I mean, that they, they follow the elections, and it's a natural four-year cycle. But I think all commissioners should be on a four-year term cycle. I think, I find that two-four-two doesn't make sense, because, I mean, historically, if it's going to be an automatic reappointment, then it should just be a four-year in the first place. So the, I think the four-year terms would be for the at-large seats, and I think the other ones reflect the council members, and that would automatically stagger it from the beginning. You know, whoever, whoever I pick, they will stay with me until I'm either, don't run again, or booted from office, or maybe I'll win again, who knows? And then, at that point, if someone takes my seat, then I think they have every right to pick the person that's on the commission, instead of having to hold on to somebody who me, who might not even be here anymore, had picked.
Well, this is certainly a sticky wicket. Maybe we, these are apples and oranges, and maybe the commissioners should be treated as commissioners, and we're council members, and never the, never, there shouldn't be a cross. We pick a commissioner, they serve whatever terms they, whether we're in, we're out, you know, win millions of dollars, whatever. But I think it, they're two different things, I think commissioners should have those terms. I don't think they should be connected to the, to the council members, for any number of reasons. But I think there has to be a consistency with respect to our commissioners. Obviously, it comes with history, the planning commission, as you have offered many times, it takes a, I don't, I think four years is not enough. I think somebody doesn't even know what they're really doing until two, or two and a half. I mean, that's having been part of that system. So I would say, I don't think, it's apples and oranges. I think we run our system, the council, we run, we win, we lose, and I think commissioners, when they're appointed, they're appointed, and that's it, roll with it.
And that's why I think the alternate system works really well, because professional baseball teams have farm teams, they have, you know, it goes all the way from Little League, all the way up into the farm system, and you just, you know, we're talking about youth commissions, that's the Little League here, right? Little League here, right? I mean, it's, if, we start bringing people in, and, and to me, it's a very, it politicizes the whole thing, and it's, you know, it's, and just, and not no offense, but, Rachel Hundley, you said, in my pick, or my people, it's like, I don't really wanna have, I don't wanna own a planning commissioner myself.
Well, no, I think you're implying something I didn't say. No one suggested any ownership. It is, I'm gonna pick people that, you know, look at the world differently than, say, maybe councilmember Harrington is, and that's the beauty of the system, is, you know, the people have elected all five of us, we're all extremely different, and then the, you know, the qualities that we evaluate in a commissioner are all gonna be a little bit different. So the person that I pick is gonna be the same person as councilmember Cook picks, or maybe we'd fight over the same person, but who knows? So it's just in the composition and the perspectives on the commissions, and if you wanna get in specifically to the planning commission, you know, a big part of their job is deciding projects and applying code, and that's part of it, but also part of it's gonna be helping us with the general plan update, and what is that based on? That's based on, you know, values and perspectives and how people see the world. So I think that, you know, the city would be, have more benefit from having, you know, a planning commission that, you know, reflects the perspective of the council, who therefore reflect the perspective of the people, because those are the people that chose us. I mean, everything goes back to the people, and we are the link to the people, and I think that the, you know, commissioners do too.
So, could I ask, Madam Mayor, if we could do another straw vote?
I, I actually have, uh, some motions I think that we could pass, we could try, unless you wanna keep doing straw votes.
Are we moving today? Oh. Are we giving direction, or are we?
No, um, the goal was to get direction today, because what we, the next step is, um, um, our city attorney used to write this up in some ordinance changes, or we need to write some, for, some things need to be ordinance changes, and we need to start that process and bring it back to you. Some could be some administrative guidelines during an interim, we'll have to see how that works, but there definitely are some things that require an ordinance, and so they need to be drafted.
I have to be honest, I'm feeling a little embarrassed right now, so I wanna get through this part.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, here is my thought, on the simplest thing that no one has had any controversy about, which is the Group A Valley Regional Appointments. Do we agree that the mayor should continue to appoint those people, subject to the, uh, process improvements to improve transparency laid out in the staff report?
Well, if we wanna, I think, we, we've started to go through a, um, sort of a straw vote list, if we want to resume where we left off.
So why don't we just, since we're, um, Jeff, are you comfortable if we just kind of, a favor, or do you want name votes?
Let's do, let's do, uh, motions in a second, and see where we go.
Okay.
Let's get as much clarity as possible.
Okay, so I make a motion that for the Group A, the Valley or Regional Appointments, that we stick with the mayoral, uh, appointment process, subject to the, um, revised, uh, the revised transparency measures that are contained in the staff report.
Can I do all in favor, or do we have to go down the line?
No, you can do all in favor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? None.
Okay. Progress. Uh, the second motion I would make, which I think, uh, might need some tweaking, is, um, with regard to the size of the commissions, that the size of the commissions, all, all commissions be seven, is that, yes? Okay, so I'm-
Does that mean you're increasing some of the commissions?
So, my, um, my choice would be that any commissions that are above seven be reduced to seven, and, uh, commissions that have been five, or if we see something that should be seven, like traffic safety, I think should be moved to seven. It doesn't meet very often, but I think it's an important role, that's not, uh-
What is traffic safety right now?
Traffic safety's currently five, I believe.
I mean, I don't know if anybody wants to serve on that commission, but it's, um-
Traffic safety is currently five, regular and one alternate, cultural finance is seven, CACC is nine, design review is five.
So I would keep them then as, as the five, and, and move CACC down to seven, and-
So the motion would be that no commission shall be larger than seven members?
Sounds good.
Sure.
I'll second that.
And, and you're retaining the sizes, uh, of those commissions that are currently five? That's acceptable? Okay.
Have you amended your motion?
Uh, I make a motion that no commission shall be larger than seven members.
Okay, and then the ones that are five are gonna stay five?
Yeah, I think that was implied in, like, not larger, but yeah, okay, and that the ones that are five shall not be changed.
Yep, sure.
Okay.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. I'll make a third motion, that, uh, the, um, uh, process for selecting, uh, commissioners on city commissions, uh, be amended to allow for, uh, each member of the city council to select one member of the, each commission, and, um, I'll make a separate motion for how we might deal with commissions that are larger than five members.
I'll second the first one.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? None.
With regard, and I'm totally open to whatever people wanna do on this, but with regard to commissions that are larger than, uh, five members, I make a motion that the additional, um, spots, uh, be selected, um, on a random basis, uh, in that, uh, each councilmember's name, uh, would be together, city staff can select one name, that person would have an additional appointment. If there were seven members on that commission, whoever had the second appointment would be taken out of the running to have another appointment, and the city clerk could pick another name, and that person would have the next appointment.
Second.
And you could defer if you didn't wanna make a second pick.
Absolutely.
I will maintain that I think the extra two should be, uh, at-large from the whole council together, but, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Me.
Okay, so now we have the, uh, mayoral appointments, the individual selection process, the, um, additional seats process. I'll make a motion that the terms of, um, all of our commissions, uh, be realigned to begin, um, February first, 2018, that the planning commission be filled prior to that time, with their term beginning, uh, November of 2017, and going forward, uh, and that those terms be on a staggered basis of two and four years, and that the, um, two-year terms run concurrent with councilmember Cook and my terms, and that the four-year terms, is that right? No. Opposite, four-year terms run, uh, concurrent with councilmember Cook and my terms, and that the two-year terms run concurrent with councilmember Edwards, Mayor Hundley, and Mayor Agrimony's terms. So there would be two four-year terms and three two-year terms to begin, those terms becoming four-year terms and two-year terms, if that makes sense?
Second.
Just ask a question. So, is it connected at all to terms of councilmembers?
It's not, it's just because, um, David and I just got elected, so our persons would have four years, 'cause we're here, but since you guys are up for reelection, you would have two years, so if there were new councilmembers elected, then when they were elected, within the first year of their term, then they could pick-
And so are the terms still going two-four-two?
That's what I was thinking.
Well, 'cause then they're gonna end up overlapping, 'cause if you're two and four, and then four and two, you're gonna end up at the same time.
How do they overlap?
Well, they do, well, but I-
And in six years, the, everyone will be-
I would, I would think that it would probably just go, because this is a separate issue, it would go four-two-two.
How about just four-four? Well, I mean, two-
You're trying to, you have to get it not staggered.
So I think you, you, you have a transition issue on this as well, and that, in the long run, you might be able to move to fours and fours, but again, to do the align, I mean, you're gonna, you, you know, you might, you might start with twos and fours, but then try to move to the four.
I suggested the two and four staying in deference to councilmember Edwards' comments about the value of having somebody for two years before they get a four-year term. That's why I suggested it.
But isn't that doing a four-year before a two-year? It's like backwards.
Oh, you're right, two people get a four-year first.
Yeah.
But it could be people that are already on there.
No guarantee.
No guarantee, though. I don't, I don't, I don't know, those are good, good thoughts.
I mean, we have a motion, it's just in six years, everyone's gonna be appointing at the same time.
Oh, is that terrible?
No, but it just seems, going from four to two, if the idea is to get people experienced, then why are you sticking a two in there? It's already experienced, after four years of experience, then they're like, super experienced.
Well, the system's looking pretty good, isn't it?
If I can interject, I mean, even with the mayor process, uh, you know, like when I was mayor, I mean, everybody, everybody stayed on, everybody stayed on, so I, I think one thing that we're, we're losing here is that these aren't, it, it's kinda like, uh, Vice Mayor Edwards is saying, these are, this is just the picking, this is the way it's being picked. It's not, um, like I'm picking my best friend to be on the planning commission, it's just the way that the process works. If, if we wanna, if, the problem is, if we go two-two-two, however we do it, we're gonna have problems, unless we get the threes and the fives going, which I don't wanna do that. But I think that the four and the four, and then the two-two-two, and then after that, it would go two, and that would, there would be different councilmembers. I'm not running for reelection at that point, so, um, you know, hopefully, uh, the individual that sits here would reappoint somebody who's on there. And, and that's about the only, if, to get it, we want it, if we wanna get it staggered, for now.
So I guess the question is, is there a preference, after the initial staggering, to have people, does everyone have a four-year term after that, or do we wanna ca- stay with the two-four-two? And I guess for convenience purposes, it's much easier on the staff, if after the initial two-year period, we switch everyone over to four years, that would be easier for the staff. That's the question.
I like, um, the idea of a four-year term, I mean, no automatic reappointment, you have someone on there long enough, and then there's a choice of either, it's like, not even about them necessarily, it's either, like, sort of moving with someone new, keeping someone who's been around for a long time, but you're giving them, like, enough time to really get settled in before anybody's moving them around.
My only argument to that would be, is if you had somebody who really shouldn't be there.
Well, I think the council could always, um, vote to remove somebody.
That's easier said than done.
Well, they'd have to be really bad.
I'm not, I'm not the attorney, so.
You can't always move to re, you can't always move to, to remove, you can't always vote to remove someone. I will say that, having worked for councils in five different cities, politically, it is very difficult, even when the full council might have had someone that they didn't like, um, and if that person's a four-year term, to pull the middle, middle of the term is a lot harder. If you've got, you know, to remove someone after maybe two years, when you don't put in, maybe, I saw this in a city where the individual really didn't have the aptitude to do the job, um, and the full council knew it, and that was clear after two years, but that person served a four-year term. But when it came at four years, the council had enough applicants on, and they were able to gracefully say, "Thank you, Mrs. B., but, you know, um, we've got this great cast of charac, cast of other applicants, and we would like to appoint this person." You could do that after two years, I mean, council has that priority. Um, sometime, I've just, I rarely, rarely, I think once, I can see where frankly, where there has been a firing of a commissioner. Typically, it's a commissioner's not, not able to show up, and they kind of, um, you know, by not participating, fire themselves. But it is very difficult politically to do, if you don't have an opportunity to assess whether you wanna reappoint someone, and looking at a variety of other options at the same time. So, I don't know, I mean, honestly, in my head right now, I can't figure, I understand the two-four that you guys are talking about, I think you need to give us some time to, like, lay this transition out, and make sure that we could make it all work. And you might wanna, again, tell us you'd like to do, like, the two-four-two, or go two-four, and then transition to fours, but we're gonna need to kind of map, you know, we, the greater city attorneys, we're gonna need to map this out.
Madam Mayor, could I ask the attorneys, could I just make a statement? Could we call for a question, please?
Well, I think with a call for a question, you have to-
The question is, before we can vote on it, do you prefer to have everybody start, basically, the long, the short of it is, do you prefer for people to serve two-four-year terms, or do you prefer to keep the current system of two years, and then four years, and then two years? Which one do you prefer? So Rachel prefers four years and four years, Gary prefers keeping the current system, I am open to two-four-two, I am open to persuasion.
And I like two-four-two.
Okay, so, make a motion that the, uh, commissioners be appointed for terms of two years, uh, and then allowed to be up again for four years, and then up again for two years, uh, for our revised system. So, like, it's all those in favor of that, I guess.
You have a second?
I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Me.
Um, just one point of clarifying, and maybe this was embedded in one of your prior motions, but I just wanna confirm. So, you, we talked about the process and the individual appointments, but again, I wanna be careful about language. That is, the terms here, in the past few motions you've made, I think that you have moved, I'm, think you're saying that you want to have these, you are making these motions, but they are not, the, the picks or the appointments are not sitting with individual, individual councilmembers, correct?
So, I think-
You are break, you are separating, with the actions you've made here, you are separating that, correct?
The only, yes, with the caveat that, uh, we are gonna tie the appointments, we're gonna start with-
The two and the four.
The two, David Cook and my appointments will be four-year appointments, and the people who are up for reelection in a year and a half will have the two-year appointments, and then that will, that's the only part that's tied.
Yep, just wanted to make sure, like, kind of that subpiece was clear. Yep, okay, thank you.
All right, what, uh, what else do we need to move on?
I'm wondering if we can, as part of this work, make a requirement that planning commissioners attend, uh, training, um, in the first year of their service.
Well, I, I think we're gonna have a whole training program, we, what, tripled the budget for training for our planning commission, and-
Yeah, I, I think there's a way to, um, I think there's a way to make sure that we have training without requiring it. What you'd hate to do is have a great planning commission, they're traveling for business, aren't able to make the training, and then they're not able to participate, so I wouldn't, I wouldn't lock yourselves in that way.
Okay, may I ask Gary a question?
Sure.
Madam Mayor, so Gary, how did it work when you were on the planning commission?
The commissioners that made the choice to go, the, um, uh, the, the staff put together the opportunity for us to go, we accepted, we went, and those of us that went generally had a pretty good time with planning commission.
Let me ask, just wanna, maybe, anything, David, do you wanna add to how that planning commission training has gone?
Well, typically, as, um, councilmember Edwards said, we make the opportunity available. Uh, most planning commissioners do choose to avail themselves of that opportunity, it is an annual training session, and it occurs at Sonoma State, that's been kind of our go-to training, but, uh, the council recently, um, you know, well, just in this budget, uh, increased the training budget, so that planning commissioners can now also have the opportunity to take advantage of training offered by the league. Um, and then we offer up additional training opportunities as they become available.
So it's like when we went, um, we all went to Monterey and had those opportunities to meet with other cities, that we all had the same issues and the same problems, no matter what size city, the same issues, there, other cities are talking about planning commissions and other commissions, and we all have the same issues, to take that opportunity every chance we get, I think is important, especially for our commissioners, because it is a volunteer job, and it's hard to take a Saturday morning to go over to Sonoma State, but I learned something, and they bring in great speakers, and Sonoma State is, you know, one of the premier schools for- one of the premier schools for city planners.
All right, any more motions?
I think so. I'm trying to remember what we decided on alternates. I thought, are we not gonna do that?
Well, no, I don't know if we had a consensus, so it might be, I think alternates we should iron out, and then also whether there's gonna be public interviews or only paper applications. I don't think we've addressed that directly, so.
So for me, in terms of paper applications, I think that, I think it's not helpful to have a public interview process. I think that the easiest way would be to receive all the applications in advance, call the planning commissioners or any commissioners that you thought, take them out and have a cup of coffee and have a chat with them about what it's like to be on a commission, and do they have the time to do it, and what is their interest, and do it informally. So I prefer paper applications.
You want to put that in motion?
That everybody has the applications, right, all?
Yes, whether, whether it's just gonna be people apply, and then the, you know, lit, applications are given to everybody, and then we each go have coffee, talk to them, whatever, or we get together, everybody gets up, and then afterwards, we make our pick.
I mean, I'm for just having the paper applications, and as long as we have, you know, if there's 10 applications that come in, that the council members all have all 10 applications.
I would like to improve our application. I feel it's a little sparse.
So, we could do it two at a time, couldn't we? Talk to people two at a time. It doesn't necessarily have to be one for 10 people, going to see 10 people? Is that what, what were you saying, Gary? I'm sorry.
We, I'm saying if we have 10 applications, that, I mean, we may, odds are that we're all gonna know a lot of the people, anyway. And just to make sure that we all have the, the applications, that, I mean, they become a, not necessarily a public document.
Yeah, you know, I'm a grown-up. I think people who apply for this position have to be grown-ups.
I agree.
And I think that they should be prepared to speak. I mean, that's just how I feel.
I mean, that's, that's okay with me, but I think just having the applications, we have to vet those applications first.
Absolutely.
Let's hope we get 50 applications, and...
But I don't have sympathy for people who want to be, I, you know.
Does anybody want to make a motion on this item?
We possibly did that in our lives. I mean, people just have to be prepared. It's like grown-up stuff.
Well, I'm gonna make a motion that we proceed on paper applications, at least for the time being. I think that if we heard everybody all at once, it'd have to be another noticed meeting. We'd have to bring everybody forward. There'd be, you know, it would just be a much larger process. And I guess, for a variety of reasons, including convenience purposes, I'll make a motion that we do it on paper applications, with the paper, with every council member being provided with paper applica, with the complete application from each applicant at least 30 days before, I'm gonna ask for 30 days before we decide who to put on there?
15 days.
15 days before we have to decide who will be on the commissions.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
No.
All opposed? Got one. Okay, alternates. I, you know, I feel that since there's not a succession to these seats, where it used to be one would open, the alternate would move up, I don't think it makes sense to have an alternate.
I think it's, it's a great training opportunity.
But they could be training for a seat that they'll never have.
It's the chance you take. But every time that we've had an alternate, that spot's been filled.
Well, that's because the way the seats work now. Now it's they move up into the empty seat.
No, we've had commissioners resign, we've had people get sick, we've had people that couldn't attend the meetings, and they were removed, or they had a conflict of interest. I mean, there's, those things come out usually afterwards, so.
What'd you do? You broke my mic.
My mic died. I'd like to make a motion that the planning, or that we have alternates.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
One question. On the staff report, they recommend that the alternates be the, should always be the at-large positions.
Well, I think, sorry, Councilmember Harrington, I think that recommendation was based on individual appointments, the council appointments being tied to the commissioner. I think if, based on how this conversation has evolved, I don't think that that matters anymore, because there's not that direct connection.
All right. I'll second that, if it hadn't been seconded.
Motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Me.
All right, so let's talk about another scenario. There's still some other items, but so under, because we, let's talk about the situation where we're sitting here in, you know, July of next year, and someone resigns from planning commission. And let's just say that they were the individual that Mayor Hunley appointed. But again, not her appointment. She, she made the appointment, but it's not tied to her. So in that situation, we're gonna have kind of a rotating list, correct? Kind of trying to, we're gonna, this, this list of council members, it's like, well, last time it was Gary's term, and now it's Madeline, so Madeline, you're, that vacancy is, there's a vacancy, and you now are gonna appoint that? I just want to clarify, how is that gonna work?
Senator Cook?
I can answer that. It's tied to the seat, and it would be, it would be, it would be that seat. Let's, let's say that I, let's say that I appointed somebody named Juan, and Juan served for two, let's say that, let's say that he served six years past my term, or four years past my term and died, then my seat, or this seat would be the one that would reappoint. The two out large are very simple, because that just comes back to the process. Because it would always be, there'd always be one person appointed to every seat up here. And that's why I'd like to see it tied to, just to the seat.
Ms. Harrington?
Oh, I was just gonna make a motion, but...
Yeah, we can have a motion. Someone feels ready to make one?
A motion that if a commission appointment, if an appointed commissioner does not fulfill their complete term of their appointment, that either the council member or that council members, whoever's holding that council member's seat at that time shall fill the vacancy.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? None.
Was that, I'm sorry, was that a 5-0? I was trying to...
Anything, what else are we, need to get covered today? I, I can't, sorry, I can't do that. Can I? No, no.
Okay, so I guess I'm just, I just want to clarify, because maybe I'm, maybe I'm being dense here, so bear with me. So in the situation that you all just voted on, there's a vacancy, and while, what I thought we talked about was that the positions, that the council appointment is not tied to the commission appointment after the pick is done, I'm now hearing that if there is a vacancy, I just need clarity.
Well, I can, I can give clarity to that.
Thank you.
It's very simple.
Okay.
It's not tied to the council member, it's tied to the seat that we're sitting in. And that way, you get the succession, and that's why we did the four on Councilmember Harrington, and four on Cook, because that gives that succession coming around, so it's just tied to the seat.
You mean like to the physical seat?
He means, like, she's one, you're two, three, four, five. Seat four is up, whoever's in seat four is picking. Seat three is up.
But we change seats once a year, so that's what I'm...
It's your election.
Well, okay, but what about this? What if, you know, there's two people running, like, two people get elected at the same time? Like, which seat do they go to?
It always goes, the seat always goes to the higher, the higher vote getter.
I don't, I think it could go to either one, because it's the same terms. All of you are on two-four-two, so whoever gets elected in your seat will be on your two-four-two pattern, right?
And if there, if there was a confusion, then the two members or the three members could do a straw vote. But maybe I've been around the council too long, but there are actually seats that, you know who has whose seat. And I always go by what the vote count, what the vote count was. And all we're trying to do is the, the selection process, just to make it simple, that people know who the next person would, would vote, would have the vote.
I think it's a sign we should keep moving forward. I know that we were all three of us elected at the same time. I don't know whose seat I have. But you're, it doesn't matter, you're on the, you're on, so there's two sets of council members here. There are people that are up for election in a year and a half, and there are the people that just went through the election. There's two seats that are up at the same time, and three seats that are up at the same time. It doesn't matter who those people are. You're either in the three-one or the two group, and that is how, is, those are the seats that are tied to the appointments. And if we stagger them two-four-two, they will either be tied with a election on Councilmember Cook, the two, me and him, or the three election, you'll be tied to that. The discreet question you asked was, in the event that there was a vacancy after, which wasn't covered by this very straightforward process, which is tied to, are you with the three or the two? What would happen? And Councilmember Cook suggested that if your pick cannot complete their term, that your seat would fill that pick. That is the suggestion.
Okay, and I'm...
I'm not, I'm just saying, everyone's acting like it's like very confusing, when it's, I don't think it is.
I'm gonna give the floor to Councilmember Edwards.
And the alternate would just go into that seat.
If, so if this is, this, if, so the alt, you know, if you really, and, I mean, if you have individual appointments that are tied to seats, as, as I understand, you're saying, Councilmember Cook. And I think if that's in the situation, then your alternates really would only go into at-large, because your individual appointments, as you just described, there's, if there's a vacancy, the seat is going to replace that. Councilmember Cook?
I'll be a devil's advocate on that one. If you have an alternate sitting there, they're actually in training, is the way I look at it. If, I'm not running for reelection, somebody, let's say that Juan becomes a council member. Well, Jose's brother is gonna pick, you know, pick the, the planning commission. He's gonna be able to look at that alternate. That alternate is not the moving in, because to be fair to all council members, everybody has their pick. That alternate is just somebody who is in training, who has been at some meetings, because I believe that if, if somebody doesn't show up, that alternate would come up here and would have full voting power. And that, that way, they're just on the list.
I think the alternate should slide right into the seat, no matter who's it is. And that's the whole point of this process.
So another, another proposal would be, the alternate takes over for the remainder of the person's term, and then at the end of that person's term, they don't get a new term, they just get however much is left of the person who's vacated their term before it's over. And then whoever's turn it is to pick gets to pick a new person, or keep the same person at the end. That's an alternate. Did you get that? So basically, the alternate will, in the, in the example, or time, if somebody does not complete their full term, only at that time, the alternate will move into the place of the person who has not completed their term for the period of the remainder of their term. And when that time is up, the full term of the person who didn't complete it, when that term is up, then whichever council member's turn it is to select somebody can either reappoint the alternate at that time, or pick a new person.
All right, we got a motion, we got a second. All in favor? All opposed? Me. What other cleanup matters do we need to address?
We're not doing the CSEC youth thing, or we are?
I think the youth, we could, well, I guess if we're...
I would argue let's wait for the youth until we have a youth conversation. It's kind of not being used currently, so.
Sure.
Let's talk about allowing, let's talk about where there is, if there's a vacancy and a gap, and, you know, there's, there's a vacancy, no, let's talk about the term has, is that gonna happen, though?
Well, just in case it doesn't, I think it'd be good to have on the books.
It might happen. The term has expired, and maybe for whatever reason, there's not an appointment that's been made with an expired term. Is someone able to serve until a permanent appointment is made?
Make a motion? Oh, well, this is their current practice, it's just not in writing.
I don't think that the current practice should continue. I think that there should be an affirmative vote to either allow you to continue, or you should not serve any longer. Anyway, that's what I think.
So I think that person should be allowed to continue, because you would have continuity of projects, things that are moving down the pipeline that person may have the history with. If you can't fill the positions, you've got to give the, the developers and the people, or maybe it's somebody with a fence height adjustment. I mean, it's, you've got to give that continuity back to the public. I think it's very important.
Mr. Cook?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that a, a committee member can, can stay on their post until voted not by the council, so they could be extended.
Well, until their successor is...
Until their successor is replaced.
Until successor is appointed. So there's an automatic extension until there is a successor appointed?
And it, and it could be that, that there might not be applicants. And there's commissions that, as, as some folks have stated, that are hard to fill. And I've seen times when we haven't gotten any applicants for commissions, so we have to be very careful with this one.
I'm not saying that people shouldn't be able to stay on if we need them. I'm saying that we should vote affirmatively to allow them to continue before they keep voting. So I'm not saying, oh, that person served eight years, and we really need them, but no, they can't serve. I'm just saying, if we're gonna reappoint them, let's reappoint them. Let's not just have them vote after their term expired.
Do we have a second on that motion?
Mr. Cook's motion, which was to continue the current practice of if someone is in an expired term, they continue to sit and can vote until a successor is appointed.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Five-oh. All right, what else?
Okay, what about non-representation by non-residents? I don't think we've, we talked about it. I don't think we took an action on that.
I mean, this, I have a hard time seeing how this fits into the, this system now. Like, it'd be one person, it's just one seat, so who gets it? Just pure luck of the draw? The out-of-town seat?
I think that the five, are there any out-of-town, or out-of-town, are there any non-residents that are, that make up the five members of a commission? Do we have that?
We have a planning commission and CSEC.
So, yeah, on planning commission, basically, one can be a non-resident. Design review, one can be a non-resident. On CSEC, there's nine members, five can be a non-resident. Four, I'm sorry, four, sorry, excuse me. Cultural fine arts, two can be non-residents, and traffic safety, one can be a non-resident.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that on the planning commission, it's a requirement there, there be an out-of-city representative. I think on the other commissions, it's optional.
I don't know that level of detail. The way it's written, the way it's written in our kind of general information that we've, kind of our reference sheet that we use to track, it just says how many folks have to be qualified electors. So that really kind of, that sets, so for like a planning commission, you have to have six that are, six members in the alternate have to be qualified electors, which means you can have one person on planning commission that could be a non-resident.
What I would like to do is just put it into a motion that there's not a stipulation. I believe when I was mayor, I was told, but we'd have to check the records, that there doesn't have to be a non-resident, even on the planning commission.
I think that's probably true, correct?
But, but I would say that it could be, and that's, they would come from the general. It would, it would be come from a council member's pick, so we would have the flexibility to bring somebody in that was a non-resident on those two, which would be an appointment by the straw vote. But that council member would, a general would be able to get a non-resident.
Okay. Is that a motion?
That a motion?
Yes.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Got one, no.
Okay.
So currently, there, the way the rules are written is there really is, under the two-four-two, there is an eight-year term. And the rules really are, the municipal laws and the way it's been interpreted is... And the rules really are, the municipal laws and the way it's been interpreted is, after your eight years, you're done. Now, I don't know if folks, you know, 10 years from now will come back and reapply, but there's not written a gap of service within our muni code, there are in some other places. But there is like, there is a sense that you serve eight years and then there is kind of a hiatus, and that you are allowing other people to come forward. Obviously, we've got some things now with the transition, you know, that makes this a little more complicated in terms of the pure eight, but I think we need to be thinking not just about the transition, but more on the thinking long run. So I would, I would ask the question about kind of commission term limit.
Councilmember Cook?
Well, I, I would say that there shouldn't be any terms on, on commissions. I believe in terms for the council members, but not for the commissions. Because if somebody is serving and they're doing a very good job and there's something coming up, and, and a council member wants to reappoint that person, I wouldn't want to see, I would like to see the flexibility of non, no non-terms.
So you say no term limits?
No term limits for commissioners.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
Councilmember Edwards?
So I, I, I believe there should be a term limit. If we look back to the work that we did on the mobile home rent control, there were people on the rent control authority for 15, 16 years. And the council ultimately had to take that over. And I just think it's, I think it's something that's important as the, as our community's changing, that we need to rotate the commissions and get more people involved.
So, I hope I'm using the right word, but I think the Rent Control Board was like an anomaly. It never met. It never, it never met.
And like the CFAC, it's kind of hard to get people to fill the seats, so we end up keeping the people who want to be on it.
What about a motion?
Well, we already have a motion on the floor. Is there a second for that one?
Can I make an amendment to that motion? Suggested amendment is that if the person you select for your pick has already served more than eight years, that it requires a vote of three council members to approve that person. No?
I will second the motion on the floor so we can vote, or did you already do it? Okay.
Can I make a comment?
Sure.
So I think it's almost, there's no need for that because there's a term and you don't have to reappoint the person. Is, or, so I guess that's, I mean, I don't mind if somebody serves, some of these projects like go on for a long time. And I think there's value in experience, but if a person isn't really doing the job, that's the point that you can, you just don't approve it. So I guess that goes with your motion.
Sure.
But I think the Planning Commission should definitely be, have a term limit of eight years.
I don't think there should be. I think, I think it'll end up being an organic mix just because of the appointment process. So all in favor of Mr. Cook's motion?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
No.
One.
No term.
Anything else that you would like for us to take action on?
I think that's, that was kind of my, that was my list. Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have direction in terms of trying to now write this up. Again, what we'll, what you probably will see, and Jeff, you know, disagree if you think differently, but I think we will need to be careful about what we codify and put in muni code, because obviously that is more laborious. So obviously, we have to change some parts of the code. And what we may put in a council administrative policy, where you have more flexibility to change. So I'm sure Jeff will use, you know, his experience to figure out which way to bring, bring these back as this gets written up more formally.
All right. Item 2.2, discussion, consideration, and possible action regarding designation of the City of Sonoma Voting Delegate for the 2017 League of California Cities Annual Conference. And we will begin with our city manager.
All right, so as council is aware, we belong with, to the League of California Cities, which over 450 cities belong to, and we, and they help provide professional training and experience both for staff and elected officials, also do legislative advocacy on behalf of cities. So there are a variety of policy items that will be voted on at the annual conference of the League, which is in September in Sacramento this year. And so there is, then we need one person to be appointed as the voting delegate and up to two alternates. And so that is the action for council to take tonight so we can inform the League.
All right, do we have any questions on this item? All right, take out to the public, public, oh, wait, do you have a question?
Oh, I guess it's discussion. I was just going to say, does anyone said they want to be the delegate?
I, we'll get back to that. Taking out to the public for public comment? You don't have opinions on this? Seeing none? I will bring it back to the council for discussion, possible action. Does somebody want to be the delegate? I would say that I would be interested in being the delegate, and I'm interested in hearing if anybody else wants to.
I'll second that.
And then, okay.
I'll second that.
So I'd like to, I'd like to make a motion that Mayor Hunley is the designate and Vice Mayor Edwards is the alternate.
Second.
Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Harrington?
Aye.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Cook?
Aye.
Aye. Right, our last item of the day is our city manager comments.
Great, drumroll. Thank you, council and community. So I've got a few updates for you. The first thing I wanted to, and this was on, on the agenda, I want to just give you a brief update about tour buses. As council knows, probably maybe 18 months ago, two years ago, there was some modifications, there's a little map here. And to try to work with tour bases, tour buses that were starting to come to town. And so a white zone was created on the Sebastianni Theater side for pickup and drop off. And then the last two years, we've seen an increase, and particularly this summer, and some conflicts with tour buses and also the Sonoma County Transit. So, and at times, we've seen four to five buses out in the horseshoe. And so we've had some conversations, and I want to thank staff, this was David Goodison, the police chief, Lisa Jansen, doing community events. And we also reached out to the Visitors Bureau for their assistance. So a few things to update you on is, and to clarify, so the Visitors Bureau is working with staff to help. They are actually out contacting and providing the tour buses with kind of this information, contacting and calling folks. The Visitors Bureau does not actively solicit tour buses, and we only have business license for those folks that are kind of in town and operate regularly. So there's not a great database of tour buses, which is something we need to kind of figure out how to build. But the Visitors Bureau has been helping us, about a year ago, they helped, and they're helping again, to reach out and do some of that and helping create a database. In addition, we've met with the County Transit Agency, and they've just done some clarification so, and reeducated some of their drivers, so that they are being, going to be moving over and parking and lining up more on, on the non, on the side next to the actual bus drop off. And our public works staff just kind of applied a broader red zone to clarify so we can stack two buses there. And we may need to provide some kind of additional little cement pad or something for a second, second transit bus for ADA reasons to drop to, but we'll look into that. So I really want to thank, they've been, as we brought this to their attention, jumped on immediately, and been a great partner to help clarify with their buses where they should be. So the team that's been working on this is talking about signage, talking about enforcement, communications, some letters. There's a variety of things that are being explored. And as council knows, the long-term strategy is to also, we are in negotiations to see if we can get a lease in the Casa Grande parking lot, which could also be an alternative for, for the long run. So understanding that this issue has been kind of a pinch point, and we've heard different comments from residents and council on this, what I'd like to ask, if I could have an ad hoc council subcommittee that can work with staff, and will come back in, you know, probably about 60 days and bring an update to the full council and community. So I have a few other updates too, but if I could get some input on that first.
So are we picking an ad hoc now?
If you could pick an ad hoc now, that would be great. And that's why I put it on the agenda formally to do so, so, I do have other updates, but that is, and the way the, the council, the way your agenda does read in some of the notes, you have the ability to create a subcommittee. On this one, I just wanted to make it even clearer, so we did put it on the agenda to clarify that.
Sure. Thank you, Vice Mayor Edwards. And Councilmember Cook?
Okay.
We have our two, do we need to take official action?
No.
Nope.
Okay. Great. So maybe just a few, I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, could, would you, may I ask a question?
Oh, yeah.
So there has to be a guarantee, because this is, somebody was saying, it's starting to look like the Alamo. You know, if anybody's been to the Alamo, it's buses. And I think that we're, you're working in the right direction, I really appreciate it. But, you know, the people that visit us, are they all flowers and they can't walk one block back to Casa Grande? I don't understand, I don't understand why we, and I, I'm hoping what I'm hearing is that it's temporary.
I think that's part of the conversation, and are there other options? So I don't, I think, to be fair, what I want to do is give you a brief update, make sure the council and community knows we're working on it, get a subcommittee to work more closely with us, and then we'll come back with some options and broader update when we'll agendize this as a regular item.
Thank you.
So a few other just brief updates. So, you know, as we are in the summer, we do have our local fire department, they have sent two fire engines to work on a fire outside of Quincy. Still have, you know, plenty of staff here, but as occurs during the summer, we do send, so there's two engines and eight personnel that are out helping fight a regional fire. Chief Sackett asked if I would commend the community for their part in helping to identify the suspect in last week's Arabo Bank robbery. There were several community members that came forward with vital information that helped us identify the suspect and the suspect vehicle. And special acknowledgement goes to a loss prevention officer at Sonoma Market, took the initiative to check the surveillance cameras and discover the suspect had been there shortly, and then provided that information. So, you know, it really, when we talk about community policing, it is community policing. And as anyone who, we would just encourage you to sign up for NICSOL, obviously, you know, look for any media alerts, but the community does help us by providing information when we solve these crimes. Also, National Night Out, so tomorrow will be the first Tuesday in August, and as always, National Night Out, since in our community, most folks are at Farmer's Market, we will celebrate National Night Out there. And it is an annual community building that promotes police and community partnerships. And so there'll be a wide number of our police personnel out walking the park and meeting and greeting the plaza and for National Night Out. So stop by and say hi. A few other updates on capital improvements, the West Napa Street Water System Replacement Project, all the underground construction is continuing in at night. I want to commend our Public Works Department, not only have they've put together information cards, but they've also put out earplugs to help with residents and offering some of that. So they've been creative, and especially for folks that are working at, people that are at hotels, are near some of the, where the construction has been. And we are doing trench paving between First Street and Fourth Street scheduled this week. As council knows, we recently approved a 2017 street rehabilitation and water services replacement project. This is for the streets around Avenue del Oro, and that construction is expected to start in late August, and they'll be noticing going out to that neighborhood. And then the Slurry Seal Project, we're looking at work beginning there in September. A few other items, as council, kind of what's coming up on some of the next agendas, as you know, we typically go dark in early August, and so we will not have a meeting on August 7th. But as councils, we talked about, we do need a, we will be scheduling one more special meeting on August 14th. That is so we can bring back the West Napa Hotel EIR resolutions. You gave us direction, but we need the official resolutions to be reviewed and the alternatives and approved. In addition, we'll be holding another closed session on labor negotiation. That will be a fairly light meeting, but there will be a few things on the 14th that, again, are time sensitive. And the 21st, we'll have a regular meeting, and we're still kind of putting together what will occur there. I don't know if many of you have noticed, but the mission bell that stands right in front of City Hall on the grass on the sidewalk, I want to thank Councilmember Aggermonte, who brought this to my attention a few months ago. And also, if you remember at the dais, we had a few folks that, a member of the public brought it. So asked Public Works to fit this in and figure it out, what the proper way to deal with the mission bell, so we were dealing with it in a historic way. And that has been now painted and cleaned up and looks quite nice. So I want to thank Public Works for taking care of that. And I also, while Chief Sackett was complimentary to the police department, I really, I mean, to the public for helping, I really want to thank the police department for working those clues through and solving that bank robbery, which helps keep Sonoma a safe place. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for coming, and this meeting is adjourned.